The Planning Commission meeting for today has come to order. We do have all members present, so an established quorum and a sizable echo. If there's any members of the community in attendance today that are planning to speak, I do need to administer of an oath. You can sit, that's fine. Just respond to my question within I do would be fine. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
Yeah, I do.
All right. If I didn't hear you say "I do," you can't speak. I'm just kidding. We can all administer an oath a little bit later. We do, if you are going to speak, we ask that you come to the table or to the podium. You state your name and the street that you live on. We do have a sign-in sheet as well. We have no cases on the agenda today, so we're going to jump forward to communications. We have a draft letter for the BZA for review. I believe this is with Integrated Services, if I'm not mistaken. This was put together by Charlene. Thank you, Charlene. Read it aloud. The Board of Zoning Appeals. This is based on case number 1102 that had previously gone through our commission. We begin reading now. On March 16th, 2011, Athens City Planning Commission met to review case number 1102, Integrated Services, at Ten Graham Drive, Title 41. Review. The Planning Commission moved to recommend approval of the project as submitted to the commission. During a review process, the commission members discussed their approval of the original project that was initially denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The commission members felt that the original plans better suited the neighborhood and zoning designation. The Planning Commission members would like to convey to the Board of Zoning Appeals their support of any formal appeal submitted by Integrated Services to the board requesting a substitution. Please feel free to contact the commission members with questions or concerns. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. I feel like that agree with the language in this letter, sort of the case. Again, remember, this was head residential at the lower, on the ground floor, in their initial proposal, which would not work based on the zoning designation.
Which is a B3.
B3. The plan that would work and was approved by the Planning Commission moved the residences up to the ground floor, and basically it was just on pilates, on stilts, and it was just open. There was no parking or anything underneath. And it maybe actually seemed more out of place for the area, but though it did meet the zoning designation and code. So, John, do you know when this is going to be? Have they continued to pursue the appeal?
Yes, they are. The fourth case on the agenda for Tuesday, May 10th.
Okay.
I feel that it captures the, in the last Planning Commission that we convened, I had a request to make sure we do follow-up items. I apologize, Charlene. This was the follow-up item that we were still waiting to hear regarding the substitution. So, we received that guidance, and so...
And again, one of the conversations that has occurred here, of course, is that to put it up on stilts, we'd follow, would be okay, wouldn't have any code violations or problems whatsoever.
Right.
On the other hand, in terms of a transition from a R1 to a B3, this would be better suited to have it down low rather than up on stilts.
Right.
And that's, I think, why we're recommending the substitution for that reason.
Oh, it's our agreement. All those in favor of...
Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, how's that sound?
Now, okay. There is a motion to approve the memorandum, and RJ has seconded, so all those in favor of approving the memorandum. Any opposition? All right. Any further discussion on that matter? All right. Thank you for your due diligence. Next, we do have sign ordinance recommendations. We've been talking about this for some time now. I think the basis of our conversation today is just going to be concerning the rental signs, and basically what came out of the latest roundtable or task force committee, if you will, on the rental signs. John, do you want to give a brief sort of summary of the minutes?
I can.
Appreciate it.
As of, I don't even know the date, but we, like October 6th, 2010, the Planning Commission recommended that we put the other roundtable meeting to discuss the rental sign ordinance proposal, I guess the way to put it. Primarily in attendance at those meetings were Joanne Prisley, Ben Lockman, Beverly Flanagan, Alan McMillan, Demetrius Procos, Tony Farran, Patrick Dockerty. Got it right. Jim Sefranic, Joan Kornansky, Michelle Pappy, Davis Sturboy, Jack Stauffer, and Caroline Thomason were all active. The eight deciding votes were different throughout each one as to how to that group because of, we voted on different ones at different times.
Okay.
But that was basically the group that decided these items. We decided to break it down for zoning. Figured it'd be the best way to go, and work on it by zone, and go from there. And then the R1 zones, what the group came up with was allowing a two-square-foot house sign approximately 15 by 19, in size, 15 inches by 19 inches. That's the same size of the signs, the orange signs you see at Lowe's, that you see around the hardware stores. And that's just slightly less than a nameplate sign, which is also permissible in R1. This would be a 15 by 19.
Okay.
That's the size of the orange signs that you would find, like I said, at Lowe's or anything like that. Just to show you, as well, this is a 12 by 18. Probably want to see this size, that most people are putting up right now.
Okay.
Throughout their properties. They would be mounted typically next to the front door, but in any event, visible from in front of the house on the first floor. They would be up for the first 45 days of each OU calendar school year, down by October 15th. We put it that way, knowing that we're about to change to semesters, so. And the October 15th came about, hopefully having them down by homecoming and Halloween. That's the idea there. They may remain up or be placed after October 15th, if not yet rented for that current academic year or the following academic year. And the sign at that point must state when the rental is available, if up after October 15th. So if it's still up after October 15th, it needs to say "available now," "available fall of 200 whatever," "available winter quarter." It has to say when it's available.
Okay.
But it can't be up more than two years in advance of the next academic year, so it can't say right now, "available fall 2016," something to that extent. The signs come down two weeks after release a sign for the next academic year. There'll be no yard signs, no brochure boxes. Any coloring, lettering, numbering, pictures are acceptable. Signs may not be neon, metallic, reflective, illuminated, moving, or flashing. No interior window signs if there is a sign on the exterior of the property, interior signs to meet the same requirements as the exterior. And we will have to check on that part with the law office to find out if that's permissible for freedom of speech on the inside. One sign per street front. There'll be no banners, flyers, anything of that nature. And if the property is for sale and for rent, the rental sign must comply with the rental side regulations, so it can't be a combination sign in the front yard. The rental sign would have to be on a house, and a for-sale sign could be in the yard.
Okay.
So. And that was, as you can see, voted on by eight members of this committee that was showing up, and it was unanimous approval on these bullet points.
Okay.
Again, I'd like to emphasize that these are just bullet points. They would have to be written into ordinance forms, and that's going to take some time to figure that out, but I'm sure I can pull it off with Paul's help. Did you want to go zone at a time, or you want me to...
That's fine, if you don't mind, unless there's any questions.
I have a question. It says the bullet may remain up or be placed after October 15th, but not yet rented for that current academic year or following academic year. So what you're telling me is that they go up 45 days before the calendar, which would be, let's assume, September. So we're talking about a month and a half before July 15th, somewhere in that neighborhood. They go up July 15th, they stay up till October...
No, they can't go up till the beginning of the school year.
Up to 45 days of each school. Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, at the start of the school year.
Start of the school year.
Okay. So they go up September sometime, they come down to 15th. If it's not rented for that year, it stays up. If it's not rented for the next year, it stays up.
But it has to say when it's available. That was the agreement, that it would say. So if it's not rented yet that year, for that academic year, it can stay up and say "available now," is basically what they're going to be saying. But if it's for, as we know through the discussions, that many of the landlords are advertising for a year in advance. If they haven't leased it out yet for, let's say, for example, this year was 2011 when this, 2010 when the school year started, so it would say "available fall of 2011" if they haven't had it leased out yet, and it would have to say when it was available.
So if it doesn't get rented for fall 2011, it can stay up to the following year, the start of the next school year?
If it's not rented.
If it's not rented.
Yeah.
So essentially, it can stay up all year long if it's not rented?
If it's not rented.
So the idea would be that, it would not be perpetual, I mean, if these, if most of the units are renting the year, the previous academic year for the next one, most of these signs still would end up coming down October 15th. If anything, single out the houses that are trouble, that have problems getting renters.
Okay. If there are three underlaid people in there, and two of them are rented, and one is not, it stays up all year long.
I don't think it specifies the percentage of rentals.
It doesn't.
That would be a problem.
Yep. That's why I was asking. That's all.
I wondered if the term "following academic year," if that's defined. But it's immediately following, or you don't...
Yeah.
I know what you're saying on that. With the switch over in schools, we were being careful how we put the terminology, or the semesters, you know, on that. I'm sure we can define that more.
Okay. Okay, if there's no question, if you...
And I agree with the mayor, that, you know, I guess we need to speak about, if there's one empty bedroom, what's that?
I think it'd have to be a percentage of the house.
Well, an R1 is three underlaid, so as soon as you get two in, it's done.
Yeah.
So that would be the majority.
Well, because I mean, I think it should be, we're talking about whether the house is for rent, not whether if there's room for rent, correct? Or, I guess that's what needs to be specified.
Say one room for, one room available. I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, or if you continue, I'm sure that will...
I just also want to stay with the quarters to the spasters that's going to come. It's actually going to be August, this year, so.
Okay.
Continue?
Yeah. The R2 zones, they would be up perpetually. They do not have to establish when they're available. The same size sign, a two-square-foot, as we discussed in the R1s. And I believe everything else is same, typically next to the front door, no yard signs, no brochure signs. Everything else is reflected as to what it was allowed in the R1. The only difference is they could be up all year round, and it would not have to define the timeframe, that when they're available. That would be the R2 zones.
Not a lot of R2s.
No, there's not.
Okay. And then R3?
R3 zones is the same as the R2, with the following exceptions. A 15-square-foot project sign would be permitted on multifamily buildings, apartments, complexes, et cetera. That is currently permissible now. It fall, but we define what types of buildings. It would fall under the Part II U Section of I of Basic Buildings. Basically, if it's a commercial building in an R3, a commercial residential building in an R3, then that would be permissible to have a 15-square-foot sign in the front of the complex. And the content of that sign would be limited to the address, the project name, the phone number, and a web address, or whatever current electronic media outlet is available 20 years from now. Who knows what it may be? So, just kind of left the door open on that.
For clarification on that, is, if they have a project sign, is there also rental sign? I understand the rental sign language will work if it's not a multifamily commercial, but if it's...
They could have one on the building, but it probably, if they have a larger sign out in the front.
There's not in the...
This is for the larger buildings, so maybe a little sign like this, you wouldn't even notice it.
Right. Okay.
B2 zones, which are downtown, is the same as the R2, except placement of the sign must be on the front door, or inside the front door, or glass, if access to rentals is on Court Street, Union Street, Washington Street, or State Street. The sign may be placed inside the upper-level window or on the face of the building if the primary interest is not on one of the four streets listed. And a emergency number is required to be on the sign as well.
So essentially, these signs would be, could be uptown all year long, perpetually?
Most of them are now. That's not a lot. Big change on that one. They have them on the doors going uptown, or upstairs. The B zones, the same as the R3, with the following exceptions. The freestanding signs must comply with the current freestanding sign regulations. The 15-square-foot project sign is permitted, just like we did in R3. And I would like to point out that in the R3, it was, would include four units or more and 16 bedrooms. So it would have to be a 16-bed, four-unit project combined to have the sign permissible. Where in the B zones, it would be four units or more and/or 16 bedrooms. So if it was, there was a couple of projects around, there may be a series of buildings, three buildings with three people or four people that may, that already does have a sign that we would felt, since that was in a B zone, there's already a lot of signings there, that that would be permissible still.
I was under the impression, no residences were allowed in M zones whatsoever.
B1s, B2s, B3s, first floor and above.
No, M zones.
M?
Manufacturing zones.
Same as the B3.
What?
Same as the B3.
No, I don't think there's residents allowed in M zones.
Well, there are some in town, is what I'm saying.
Like a grandfather.
Maybe if it's grandfather, they want to do something, so.
Okay. I'd have to check on that, but I don't think that's the case. But I don't know. Okay.
I'll look to...
Can you tell me where an M zone, where an apartment is?
No, I was just thinking of the one, but I'm thinking now that it's B3, going out west of Union. So I think that's B3 out there.
Okay. Station Street, Park.
Station Street.
Just looking at the map over there.
Yeah, Station Street.
Whoops.
Okay.
Do you remember approving Station Street?
No, that's predates everybody, I think. Okay, continue, sorry.
That's okay. And then the last part was preliminary proposals for sale signs. In the R1, R2, and R3, one real estate sign per street front shall be permitted, providing that such signs do not exceed 6.2 square feet. That was a recommendation that was adopted a while back by the sign committee a couple years ago. In single-face, currently, our code allows five square feet, so 6.2 in single-face sign area, four-point feet high, currently five feet is allowed. So it would be a reduction in height, but an increase in size, which is what you measured out as a standard residential real estate sign currently, that you see around town. The sign shall be removed 14 days of closing date of the sale of the property. And again, the for lease or for rent signs must comply with rental sign regulations.
When you say frontage, you mean on a corner lock, you could have two?
Corner locks, you have two. And it's currently written that way in our code as well. In the B zones and the M zones, one freestanding sign for sale, for lease, available now, build-to-suit or other like signs shall be permitted per street front, provided that such signs do not exceed 32 square feet. Currently allowed 50 or 100 square feet, depending on the number of street lanes, in single-face area, and eight feet in height. Currently 30 foot could be put up there. We come up with 32 foot based on somebody putting in two 4x4 posts and a piece of plywood that says "build-to-suit," and that's a 4x8 sheet of plywood, 32 square feet. So, that's where we come up with that number. And that seems to be the most prominent way that's done on job sites and that. Temporary wall signs advertising for sale, for lease, available now, build-to-suit or other like signs shall comply with current wall sign regulations. And again, the sign shall be removed 14 days of the closing date or the sale occupancy, or sale or occupancy of the property.
Okay.
John, when you're referencing temporary wall signs advertising, is that including banners, or you're eliminating banners?
No, that, on for sale and for lease, I know they're using a lot of them, or doing banners.
Right.
That's something we can definitely talk about. Right now, I still have banners in there, because they said that as current code allows, and they do allow them right now, in the M, or the B zones. So, we would be eliminating them in the Rs. This is just in the Bs.
I saw that.
Well, I appreciate you holding the roundtable and doing a summary as well, and putting this together. It seems like something headway was definitely made. There was a lot more of opposition when this was first discussed, and people weren't in attendance at the meeting. You know, I think, you know, it would be a change, having the up for 45 days for the beginning of the school year, and then taking them down if it's not rented. And I think the mayor, or was it Paula, basically said, I mean, it's like it's perpetual if the building isn't rented. And so it does sort of, kind of make it where you can have it both ways, where the sign, if you still have something for sale, you can still say it's for sale. If you don't have it for sale, you don't need a sign that says it's for sale, or for rent, is, I guess, the better term to use. But, so I don't see why that couldn't be approached in the R2 and R3s. What was the resistance to kind of going that, the same route of the R1, of the up for 45 days, and then down if it's rented by the 15th for that year or the next year?
You're saying, why isn't it that way?
Yeah, why would it, what would be the need for perpetual if you basically found a way to make it, so, you know? You can have the sign up perpetually if there's a need. If there's not a need, you don't need to have the sign up.
It was, I would say, because the R2s and R3s would be more of the rental areas, so it's just was a little bit more accepted that they're up all year round. This was kind of R1s, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, I think if there's something written on them, we can definitely do something more about it. And I thought we would do some sort of a campaign on our end, that we would get the word out that if you have already signed a lease on a property, and you still see a sign up on your property, hey, call us. Why is my house still being advertised if I've already signed a lease? To help get them down in that situation.
Well, other than the fact that they might be leasing for the next year.
Right. Okay.
Right.
So you kind of almost see it as, from your side, it's going to be much harder to, you can enforce a regulation such as this in the R1. It'd be more difficult, I mean, R2, probably not so difficult in R2 since there's, you know...
Not that much.
Four streets, but in the R3, it'd be pretty difficult to enforce that, since the majority of the houses are rentals.
Right. I guess it was that give and take to the two sides.
I understand that. And then, would the same go for, why not putting the language on the sign of when it's available? Again, an enforcement issue?
And then...
In the R3?
Well, if it's up perpetually, then it was a matter of changing the sign, taking them down. Why would you put it up there if it's up all the time?
Could you see someone saying the house is for rent and it's not for rent?
I don't know.
Because for, you know what I mean? That would be, I guess that'd be why I'd want to see a date on the sign.
That would be a cost associated with that.
Well, I guess, I mean, would it work this way? So the building's for, if there's a sign that says for rent, and it's, a lease is already signed, could you be like, "Well, it says it's for rent, I'll give you $500 more?" You know, I mean, I feel like it creates a situation that, you know, the stakes would always be constantly raised.
Wasn't this more, wasn't the R3s and the R, this is more about the property management, not necessarily advertising that it is for rent right now?
That's what I thought, but this is reading like rental signs, not property management. Am I mistaken on that?
It's both.
Okay. It doesn't indicate, I didn't see that.
So I thought this was just rental signs strictly.
It would be.
Because I was reading the property management, once you got to the project sign language and... Yeah, I thought our commission was pretty open to the property management sign as, at the door, or something along those lines. Yeah, I did not see it read it that way at all.
This is not one, is it? I don't think it is.
I think that means clarification.
And I'm trying, keep in mind, this has been, like, November...
Months.
I'm trying to remember when we talked about one. It's, the top part of the sign was the property management or ownership, and the bottom sign saying "available now" or "for rent." So if I remember correctly, it was property management signs as well, on the top part as being the contact person.
And I think that's where the "do not have to establish one available..."
Yeah, that would, that definitely makes more sense, yeah. Yeah. Okay. I don't see why you would have to move, take down a property management sign in R1, then.
I don't think people wanted property management signs in R1.
So R1 would be rental sign, R2 and R3 would be property management.
Either.
Both. And again, but property management signs would come down in R1s as well, and meet the same, this is property management rental, I guess, we decide for both of them. I mean...
And notice, there's no sign rental in an R1 zone, except for the 45 days, or whatever it is.
That is correct.
Unless it's not rented for the following year.
Right, yes.
Then it's up forever.
Well, until it's rented.
Could be forever. Depending on the neighborhood. I could tell you about three that's...
They should probably not rent the place, then.
Well, maybe we should work on that, too.
I'm hearing that the rental market is, that we have vacancies, and it's pretty late in the school year for leases to be signed for next year, so I think, I think the competition is indeed starting to impact. You have some property owners here that could, you speak to them.
Okay. Any comments? No, RJ's not allowed to say anything on the record.
Off record. You can't say anything, you can't vote, you're stuck. Harry, you got anything?
No, looks good.
Well, I mean, it may seem ambitious to try to put some of this in more code language, so I almost feel like keeping it loose like this for any discussion in a form of a, more open than we already are, public hearing, so, I don't know.
We're going to run into an issue here, because we're heading into a high rental event season. And I guess we'll just, you know, if we're saying that this is moving a little too rapidly, we may not be able to meet that.
That was my thought. I mean, I don't, you know, I talked with Paul Oga about trying to, what sort of timeline could we get this, some sort of new ordinance or revised ordinance in the city council's hands prior to the end of the school year? So that most of the populations here, when the discussion's taking place, it seemed like it'd have to go at a pretty rapid pace to make that work. And, you know, I don't think it hurts us if it doesn't really get in there until the beginning of the school year at this sort of time that we're talking about, where, you know, if anything goes in after the effect, I don't know how that works. If there's signs up after, say, a new law passes October 16th, does it go into effect the next year, or does it go into effect right then? And if it was after the 15th of the month? I don't know. I mean, I think that would have to be discussed, but...
Exactly. I guess I'm, what I feel that we'll be facing is what happened this last year, so perhaps in terms of where the whole city looked like it was for rent.
Right.
It was, wasn't it?
Very good, Eddie.
I mean, the other issue we're running into is, I mean, I'm sure people who are in the property management, you know, industry would like to see this happening faster rather than later, since they're, right now, the law is being enforced as is, and signs have been allowed.
Technically, it's not being enforced as is, which is all the more reason to do it quicker.
Right, right. Please.
So if you were to take this, how... So if you were to take this, how long would it take you to meld this into the code?
Well, do you think we should leave it in the bullet point format for the May 18th meeting? I think probably we should since it'd be easier to go through, much like we're going here.
I guess, yeah, my concern with putting it into code right away now is it sounds like this is what we're putting forward. And I don't know if we're that locked down to this. I mean, I think this and there's the other comments that were also made prior to the task force command. I mean, I think it's all relevant.
If you're ready to move forward on May 18th with the recommendation to council, we should have it in, we should have it in codified language. If you're not ready for that, it can stay in bullet.
I didn't feel like we'd be ready for it until, I mean, we have our public meeting, public hearing, and things are, things could change from that. So I, but that's... I certainly feel that has to occur prior to us coming up with a recommendation, but the board may feel differently here.
Well, you know, I mean, that is open. I mean, I think RJ, you're welcome if this is, to discuss this angle of the matter.
The timing and-
The timing and the whether, you know, is this something we need to put into a codified language now rather than later?
I would be, you know, realize to have it in bullets is nice, but the next thing really is to put this into the code and see where it clashes. I mean, we could drop it in pieces by, piece by piece. I mean, there is a section for, what is it, for sign, it's standards for R1, signs in R1 and R2 residential zones. It has to be 230313H. I mean, we could just, you know, to drop it in there, probably is not appropriate, but that would be a starting point.
Right.
And see where, you know, and see if we could have it as a bullet and we have it, meld it in there and say, where's, where do you expect it to end up and what does it look like that it ended up there? If we're happy with the word on that map.
Right, yeah, I can, I mean, when this conversation started, I don't think we even had property management signs. We were sort of creating new definitions as well, so we almost need to see it all in there.
I'm trying, okay, so you're saying the ministry and rental sign and property management sign is just the name of the-
Well, I think, I guess the for rent sign is the, yeah, I think on the for rent sign is what you do get at like Lowe's or CNE. And the property management sign is something you pay a sign company to manufacture, your company logo and that sort of country.
Uh, since the ordinance says itself, it doesn't matter what design, color, or anything in there. It covers both, any coloring, lettering, numbering, pictures are acceptable. So if I could buy a sign at Lowe's or CNE and just put for rent, you know, for rent sign with a little spot for my telephone number and my company name, that's as appropriate as, you know, something that says such and such, you know, the greatest renters in the world or something like that.
Right.
Come here, uh, come hither or something. So to me, that, there's not really a distinction between for rent signs and a management sign in terms of the wording, if they're, if we're talking about the same size and lettering, coloring, and numbering pictures are acceptable. I don't know, I mean-
Well, there isn't right now, I'm just wondering if we'd need to create that.
This is a difficult situation, but you need to recall that we had a lawsuit that we were successful in the city was in terms of property management signs. That was history, but-
I think you guys have scripts of that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Whoever sits there in council.
It's probably the councilman.
We were just figuring out the timeframe as well. We had a meeting in May, which we, the evening meeting, that was still in bullet points at that time. Then codified, what would it be, first week of June? And if it got passed through to that point, went to council, it would have to be 30 days before it goes to-
Council, is that correct?
You have to, 30 days public notice of a change to zone and code for a public hearing at the plan or at city council.
So that's July 1st and then, you know.
With council recessing in August, if they're going to do three readings of any change and assuming they're ready to make, to start voting once a public hearing's been made, the law would likely not come into effect until October. So there is, by that point-
So essentially, there's no rush now because we're not going to be able to fit it in time. That's what I think if we restarted. Other than we have no resolution for how the rental signs will be displayed.
Unless, if we're ready to go next, in two weeks at the planning commission level, then it might fit in time for August recess, but even that's going to be tight.
Right. Well, one other thing is, I mean, we could fore, you know, we've talked about this for a while. We shouldn't, but we could forego a public hearing and have, you know, rush this through to get into code language and how it fits in the Title 23 and vote already on the 18th. But to me, it just seems like a rush for, I don't know if it really would get us biased more than maybe mid-September.
I do believe though that we should keep them moving through, even if it doesn't go into effect till the year after. I'll be honest with you, I'm sitting here now, last minute, we have January 27th and I had already forgotten some of the stuff we've done, so.
And this has been going on since, what, at least a year and a year?
Right.
Again, I'd be interested to see how this melds with that passing code. It's nice to look at the bullet points, but eventually we'll have to go through bold and strikeouts in each section where they apply and they don't apply. We should take the first stab at that, even if things change, we'd know what clash, what contradicts each other internally.
Would that be something you think you could prepare by, say, the 16th? You could, you know, distribute it to newspapers and the press.
The next two weeks we got coming up. Might not make any promises.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking if you're going to have a public hearing, I think it would probably be beneficial for people who don't have experience reading through codes to have the bullet points available as well.
The issue with the public hearing, if you, for the planning commission, if they choose to make, to have a formal public hear-
We're not going to have a formal.
Okay.
I think-
Because that requires an additional 30 days public notice. If we just want to have-
We're just making it more clear that the public's-
An evening meeting to talk about an issue that's the planning commission deemed pressing. We can do that on May 18th, two weeks from now. And again, if, if the planning commission thinks it's comfortable more or less with what's on these bullets that was recommended through that task force, we can get it, we can get it to you by the 18th. We can write it into the code and do the crossouts. That can be, that can be figured out. Probably take about five or six hours of our time, but it can be, that can be done, it's not a problem. But if you don't think you're ready to move forward on the 18th, we can just keep talking about it and then we can put it in once you guys have made more determinations as to what you want. Either way, it's not, it's not wrong for John and I to put it into the code.
I mean, I think it's going to be this or it's going to be something not far from, I mean, rental signs or-
I would move that we keep going forward this. I, I'm not, and to tell you the truth, I'm not entirely happy with it, but it's, again, it's a compromise which is intended to be, not entirely happy with it.
Right.
I would like to see this in the code so we know what it looks like. At least for reference when we look at the other sections of the code and how it jives.
Okay.
I think we should think about it in evening meeting at this point, just so we can get a different blend of people who can't make it on today.
Right.
Not a formal public hearing, otherwise we'd be stuck to the timetable.
Right.
But that's, that's just my opinion at this point. I think it's been hanging fire for a year and a half. We may not get it done in time for this year, but at least everybody will know what the planning situation is for the next year.
Right.
And they'll have lots of time to make signs.
And that's when they're going to semester, so we can put some of the timeframe more definitive in here then too.
RJ, ask.
John, what was the reasoning in bumping up the sign, signage to the 15 by 19 from the 12 by 18 when current landlords don't seem to have a problem getting those signs at the 12 by 18?
It won't say 15 by 19, you see that's in parentheses. I'm just trying to give you an example that that's what size the 121s are at Lowe's and so on and so forth. So it, it doesn't matter as long as it's under 12 square, or two square feet.
May I ask, Chair, since we do have property owners here, if they might want to speak to us on this subject?
As Paula suggested, is anyone would like to speak that hasn't got an opportunity to on this discussion?
I would like to speak.
Either the table or the podium, whichever you feel more comfortable. I will swear you win because I did not specifically hear I do, so. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? Thank you, just state your name and your street.
Michelle Paffey, I live on North Congress Street. And I was one of the people involved in several meetings to work on this. I just want to speak briefly and just say, this was a large, in my opinion, spirit of a group of people from the community coming together to work together. We had quite a few people from neighborhood associations as well as landowners. And that doesn't happen very often. And when you lived in, live in a closed-in neighborhood, that is really important to develop these relationships. So I want to say that that was a huge success in terms of what we were able to do. And sit down in meetings where we didn't necessarily understand each other's point of view. But I think we were able to clearly, you know, get through that. I secondly would also like to say, I'd like to see this keep moving forward. We have been working on this for a long time. John has, and Paul have been working on this, and I think we just need to keep pushing forward.
Right.
You know, if it doesn't make this renting cycle, so be it, but at least we've got the people here to, to work on that. And we've all been working together on that. There do need to be some clarifications and I think it's, I'm glad what Paul said. I think that come the public, well, the informal public meeting, that we need to be able to look at some language as to how that would look in an ordinance form. I think that's, it's a good plan, so when the public comes, it's just, okay, so this is kind of what it would look like. Or other landowners who maybe weren't involved in this process would come. So yes, there are some talking points that still maybe need conversation or whatever. But I think we've hammered out quite a few things here and people worked hard at that. You were mentioning the issue about the in R1 house or rooms. We probably do need, that would be one thing that I think, whether the whole house is rented. I think there's generally one lease oftentimes in an R1, I'm hoping.
That's actually not a bad point based around lease.
So the house is rented, now whether they have all their people together as to who's going to be living there, that's one thing. But the house is rented, so that's why.
Yeah, I would assume that the majority is rented, like any democracy, majority rules, it's rented. I think, you know, I don't know-
Whether every bedroom is full to what should or shouldn't be, that's another issue, but the sign needs to-
Yeah, and usually the burden's on the person leaving then. Right, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, your comments.
I'd like to congratulate John also. You know, I think it builds nicely on the earlier sign meeting committee that I was on a couple of years ago and that I see a lot of the ideas that we put forth in that earlier meeting. And I'm glad to see that we were able to, with your committee, get through some of those ideas again and have that reach the community as well. Thank you.
Demetrius?
Hi, my name is Demetrius Prokos, I thank everybody here about me. There are a couple of things, I was part of the same roundtable and I was really good. I had the same feelings, I was a good, I was feeling good to finally get together with all the consent parties or representatives of the consent parties. And I think we came in a very good agreement. And everybody compromised, we compromised a lot. Hopefully that people that are specialized in different fields can fine tune what we came up with. There were some issues that came up then and some that just came up today. Mayor had a very good point about what happens if we have rent to two people in a three-person house. And to answer some questions, a reply came out. The law says that three unrelated people can live in R1. Does not say you have to have one lease. We as landlords, because we're feeling the pressure now from what's going on in the market, we advertising and probably, you know, in the Post and we have, you know, my company in the Athens News, I'm not for sure in the Post, but we advertising rooms for rent, okay? We have the right to advertise rooms for rent on R1. What we have lost in R1, at one time, we had a five-bedroom house and we still have that house. Then the law says you cannot rent to any more than three people in R1. So, okay, now we have a five-bedroom house, it was always a five-bedroom house. Now we have to lock some bedrooms up or at least don't rent it. And then maybe the students will sneak some people in, okay? But we try to, we lose an income in order to do that. Now, we don't want to have a law that says that we don't want to rent to two people because we're going to have to take our sign down and then we won't be able to rent at all. Okay, so we have, let's say, that five-bedroom house. By law, we can only rent to three people. And now we're going to make another law that says if the majority has been rented, you cannot put a sign up to rent it to any more people. I don't know if that makes sense to you, but please evaluate that idea, okay? I believe, like a hotel, the hotel doesn't say one room vacant, 10 rooms vacant. The hotel says vacancy, okay? Our YR industry needs to say how many rooms you have vacant. And one more other subject, and it is something we have came up in our roundtable meeting. The idea about advertising when the house is available for rent in R1 and R3s and R2s makes more sense than in R1. And I know you puzzled with that, but listen to that. I live at Longview, Longview is coming on the end of the town, okay? If a house is in the little area by itself and says for rent now, that means come and do your drugs, break in the house and do your drugs now. Means it's available house, okay? You know, come in and break in, take the wiring of the house, take the appliances of the house. The people don't even have to stick it out to see if anybody comes in and out of the house. The sign already says that, they're just driving by, just come back tonight, okay? So we don't want to advertise when the houses are available. That's a little bit difficult to enforce it. And then where the enforcement going to go? Are you going to, you know, are we going to say, well, prove to us that this house is not rented for next year? So now I'm going to have to open up my books, you know, to let my, basically, you are the government. Let the government come in, you know, I'm not doing anything wrong, but now I have to prove my innocence just because I'm a landlord? That's one thing. Another thing, as a landlord, I don't want my competition to know if my advertisement is working or doesn't work. Or if my price structure is working or not. I have some trade secrets that I like to protect. Well, the only thing my competition has to do now, if I was on the books, drive around, see how many properties I have available for this year. And if it's less ratio than theirs, then now I'm doing better than them. But at least when we have a sign that says for rent.
It just-
And I don't have to prove for when it is for rent. Maybe it's not quite as bad for these two reasons, okay? The other thing, we left something for the law director to think about. One of the things I had a problem with in the meeting was no interior window signs. Inside my window, you tell me what I'm going to put?
Well, with the year, I think the reason the interior one is an issue is because it's not, you might be the property owner, but somebody is actually living there. So wouldn't it be more about getting permission of the occupant than-
That's between me and them though, right? Not between me and the city.
And that's what we need to get answered.
Okay.
That, you know, it is my property and I can make a conditional lease. If you want to rent my place, my sign stays up. Or maybe you say, the tenant, no, Mr. Prokos, I don't like that condition, I don't want to rent from you.
Right.
Okay, but the government- Okay? But the government to come in and take my right, that the fathers of our country has given. I don't know why the city of Athens has more rights than any, what the federal government has.
Right.
Okay? The other area that I think we need to work with it a little bit, we're talking like in R3, one of the areas says that, in order to have the sign, this will include four units or more, and 16 bedrooms or more, within one building, or on one side. That means that if somebody has one building with 16 bedrooms, can put a sign up, or at least a sign that this, who's talking about, but the guy that has, let's say, 20, three bedrooms, three unit buildings, but none of the three, you know, there might be three one-bedroom apartments, in 20 buildings, he cannot have a sign up.
No, yeah, because, so as long as you're above 16 bedrooms or four units.
Or within one building. Within one building.
Right.
So that means to be, what to do, to be, John has an explanation to that, and has a logic to that which was made sense. But in Athens, I give an example, in that, right in what the South Wyatt, a lot of people call it, on the end of Richon Avenue, where I have the gas station, and then there are apartments there.
Demetrius? That's a B-zone. It says "and/or" in the B-zone. That's.
But it doesn't say that B-zone, the apartments to B-zone, B-zone in the same.
In the B, no. It says "and/or" to that.
And the B.
So you would be able to do that there. The R is that it has to be both, in the R.
I see, okay. But even R though, if that's, that doesn't seem fair, because one building with 16 apartments, 16 bedrooms, okay, can put a sign up, but on R3, you can put 20 three-bedroom apartments, if you want to, if you have the room to do it. Am I correct?
I don't know if you'd have the room to do that.
Am I correct, sir?
Yeah, if you have room, but that would be, it would be permissible, because you're 16, I mean.
But then, but if I don't have 16 people in one unit, I cannot put a sign up.
That would be a PUD at that point, so, and then a PUD can grant different variances to allow for a sign like that. And then, I can't think of any instance like that around town.
In a single site, yeah.
Well, there are a lot of things being built in Athens, because of all the pressures going on, and a lot of people coming from Maritown, and they, because you have so many regulations already, that, you know, they come in and they're cutting their heels down, and they put big units there. So we need to address that in a fair way. And I'm going to leave, I think, one thing. One thing, I personally have an issue, we have discussed it in the meeting, but I think that's as unfair as it is doing interior window, interior signs, basically. Why a realtor can put a big sign up, and we cannot? And why don't we regulate the for-sale signs then, too?
We are. That's in here as well.
But we regulate it, we give it a lot more, a lot bigger signs for them to use. They can put two, if you have a cornered house, they can put two signs up, and they'd be a lot bigger than the for-rent sign.
Because that's definitely temporary, and only up for a short time, hopefully, and then not up again for 10, 20 more years.
Well, there are homes for rent, you're right, but there are four homes for rent that have been in the market for a year or more, many times. And we don't have no regulation to say, after a month, you have to go to this, to sign that the other industry has to do. And again, I just want to make the point that everybody forgets, this is a very important industry in Athens. When we say that the whole Athens is for rent, well, the most of the houses in Athens are rental properties. So, it is a fact, when you have 70%, am I correct, John? I don't remember the exact.
Possibly.
70% of the houses, three out of 10 houses are not for rent in Athens. Seven of 10 are for rent in Athens. So when you see a for-rent sign, it is, it is there, because should be there. It is a business, and we need to make a living with it.
A couple of things. When you do use an analogy of a hotel versus, with rooms for rent versus a R1 zone, there is a difference in terms of zoning, in terms of hotels. When you say, we're 70% rental, of course, that means, that's almost an argument for no signs whatsoever, because the odds are, I can knock on anybody's door, and it will be a renter.
Right.
I mean, basically, 70, seven out of 10 dollars I knock on will be a rental.
Well, having a, having a sign up perpetually.
I'll also point out, sign, yes, a sign up perpetually.
Or your sign perpetually means the same thing.
How about that? Which is the same argument when you talk about your competition, your competition looking at the number of signs out there. This would be an argument for no signs whatsoever as well, because then the competition wouldn't know what you're doing.
Yeah.
That would be a very smart move.
The competition doesn't know, I don't want my competition to know if I'm renting this year or next year. That's the point I'm making. Let's keep the regulation that, I'm not saying, let's put a sign up forever. I'm saying, if I can put a sign up, according to this regulation, to advertise when, might be a problem, A, with a crime.
Oh, yeah. And that's the argument why you don't want signs on windows, because you could have crime behind the windows with signs on it, and that's the stance now. 230313E4 says, regulations, opening, signs shall not obstruct fire escapes, sand pipes, windows, or doors of any building. The interpretation is to obstruct a window at that point. So you could actually have crime behind that window, that sign that you're putting in your window, so you might not want to put that.
So now, are we going to have a regulation, cannot have curtains on the window? Or blinds on the window? That's not an argument, my guy.
This is what's in the law right now.
No.
And this is in the sign portion of the, not the blind portion of the ordinance. It has, this is in sign regulations, not blinds regulations.
I don't want to argue with you, but the point I was, it was about crime behind the window.
In terms of.
Because we're not regulated to leave our windows open, so that people can watch us from the street.
Yes. In terms of whether how many people are in your building or not, in lease or not, you have the tenant landlord forms, which should tell you how many people are leased or not. We already have that in regulations, I believe, don't we? You have to submit a tenant landlord form.
Right.
Okay, so therefore, well, if you say, how many people are actually renting? Two people in the house, three people in the house, then it's already a known entity.
It is a known entity. The only thing I was making a point on, that if I, if we rent, if we have a three-bedroom house, it's a five-bedroom house, but we can rent to three people.
Three unrelated, I'll marry it.
Three unrelated. So I have three unrelated leases in the house, three unrelated leases in the house.
Yes.
But in this particular house, when these people moved out, now I only have two unrelated leases, and I have only two people.
Yes.
Then, that's why I was asking you guys, to please take that in consideration, because then I wouldn't be able to have a for-rent sign for the third bedroom, if we decide that if you rent majority of the house, then you're done. Okay? That was the point I was making.
And if the majority is rented at that point.
Well, the majority is rented, but would it be fair not to advertise the remainder of the house? Because if you do that, then you're forcing me, if I have two people coming in to rent the house, I'm going to say, I'm sorry, I don't rent to two of you, unless you bring a third one. And that makes it tougher on them, and creates a hardship on me. I have now a house, that I'm making a decision, because you over-regulate me, not to rent it, when I have two people ready to rent, and with hope I'm going to get a third one. But now, if I don't, if you take my most important part of advertisement, the most effective advertisement away from me, just because I didn't rent all three bedrooms at the same time, I don't think that's fair.
Do you think this bill should pass if only, only three out of four people vote on it? And the approval? That would not, that would be the majority, but not everybody, and that would be unfair to the person who voted against it, I think. So, maybe we shouldn't pass it.
It's up to you what you want to do. I'm just, you know, we got together, we've done our best, and we are here telling you our thoughts about it.
Thanks for participating in this.
What's that?
Thank you for participating in this, I know you did a lot of work.
Yes, we did. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Demetrius, for your comments.
The recommendation, as it stands now, given to us by the sign committee, was that it would be up perpetually, and did not have to establish one available.
An R2s and R3s.
Yes.
Yeah, it was only R1 that had to say when available. And only if it's still, if it's beyond October the 15th.
I've seen it both ways, in terms of leases, that it's one that all three enter into, or that's singularly entering into a lease, in order to be responsible for their room rent, and the division of that, so, I mean, I think it happens both ways out there.
Yeah.
And that's something we can discuss, that, you know, think about, maybe it does say bedroom for rent, and if there is one available, if there's that all-in under the other stuff, there's a one room available in an R1.
Would that be a single utility?
They usually reference, I've seen them both, because of my own experience in them with my daughters, that there's one that they enter into with their roommates, or there's, they each have their own for that bedroom, and that reminds how much their rent is, and that there's to pay one-third or one-fourth of the utilities, so.
And do we shut the water off of two-thirds of the people?
Yes.
Just a quick question.
I know it is kind of.
Oh, okay.
If it's not bad and foolish, shut off.
Oh, okay.
So the majority does suffer, if the minority.
Just asking, I'm just trying to get this clarified.
What? Yeah, I mean, I know, like, R1, you're only, see, I wonder if you could base it on kitchens or something like that.
Kitchens?
Yeah.
You only have one kitchen per house, though.
Well, it should be based on the unit, not the room.
Bedroom?
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess that's the.
We still haven't even addressed condos.
Mm-mm. Those condos. There's not too many condos, but enough. All right, any other comments before we go down to?
I don't know if you publicly, you didn't even send us an email right before, I don't know if you got it.
She said you were sick.
She said, "Down and all, I'm in bed with a bad cold, won't be able to attend the meeting, but I hope a few others can go, and that the commission will forward our proposal to council with no problems. I'll most certainly be at the May 18th meeting, after three years, let's finally get this through." So, that was perfectly.
All right, so, you think maybe, I'm thinking, May 16th, or that Monday, we'd have this codified, that, can we do a sort of preliminary release to the, you know, either the public on the website, or to news media, of this is what's kind of up for discussion, this is it? But there's sort of room for improvement, and then, if that could be read aloud at that public meeting, and then we sort of open it up to the public? For comment? 16th, is that doable?
Did you secure, are we, where are we holding the evening meeting?
Here.
Here. This will be a Wednesday evening.
Yeah, usually it's open, yeah, that's why we.
And what time are we meeting?
Well, I was going to throw out some suggestions.
Wednesday, the 18th.
Correct.
Yeah. Wouldn't it make more sense to get people, before they left the glorious uptown area, or after dinner?
Seven always works for most meetings, I don't know. It's your call.
Seven sounds good to me, is that fine with everyone?
So, do you need a motion to say, let's put this in code and start moving forward with it?
It's a good question, do we need a motion for that?
I would have a motion, we accept these recommendations of the task force, as dated from January 27th, 2011, is that the last meeting that was there?
Yes.
I need, now, is the definition of accepting?
The accepting would be, well, that's what I'm saying, I think.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to maybe, with the exception that it gets put into our code, so we can, so I think we're not accepting, I think we're accepting it getting, going to the next step of seeing what it looks like as code. So it's not.
You're not accepting the recommendations right now.
That's what I'm suggesting, is we don't accept the recommendations, we just accept the.
The receipt, acknowledging that we're, I mean.
I'm wondering if, will we get an acceptance of the recommendations now, so?
Well, okay, I, we, you know, realize, we can always modify it in another motion down the road.
Okay.
And, from my point of view, this is, as I say, some of it I don't like, some of it I like, it's, you know, compromise, it's a start. We may as well say, let's move forward with this, until we get better data, different data, from the public hearing, or the quasi-public hearing. If we put it, if we, if we make this as solid as possible, then we, people can actually, you know, throw good rocks at it, and see if it shatters or not. If it's still nebulous, they know what needs to be changed.
Okay.
At least from my point of view. And I know, I didn't think it was three years, but it could be three years. And if it is three years, then, I'm probably selfish for wanting to get this done before my election. But, maybe I should be speaking, because it may be, you know, I have a conflict of interest here, which is just loosely. But the fact is, I think, you know, we, I want to see it in code at this point, I want to see what it looks like, and I think we should keep moving ahead on it.
Okay.
We still have pending cases, we have some citations pending on this.
Absolutely.
We still have people in violation out there, too.
Okay. Well, I second the motion to accept the recommendations of the roundtable, and to see it turn into code. And I'm going to do a statement. Okay.
I still don't have a clear definition, so you're accepting these recommendations?
I'm accepting the recommendations with the knowledge that it can still be modified.
What if we just, I guess.
That's why I don't know if we need a motion, just can we, can John just put it in code?
Expect the recommendations to attempt to codify, go from there, see what, and then decide on that, I don't know. Or I just, we just work it up, and?
That's why I think we could just ask you what that.
I don't know.
So just work it up.
The blessing to move forward.
Unless you need a motion hanging over your head to get this done, but I don't think you do work that way.
We want to work it out.
Okay.
Okay.
And we are going to have a meeting the?
The 18th. I will, we'd like to put a motion that we change our May 18th meeting to 7:00 PM, Sim would second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, I guess. Depending on, you know, you're going to need to leave a lot of time, I would imagine, for this, so, depending on what additional agenda items you might have on there.
It's basically just this, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. So, RJ, quasi-second to that, but I'm going to take this as second. All those in favor of moving the meeting to 7:00 PM on the 18th?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any further discussion on the signed ordinance recommendations, or did that just leave everybody more confused than ever? Okay, we have reports from our illustrious city bodies, the city planner and director of development and code enforcement, would either of you like to, to lend a report?
I just have one thing on the, to communicate. There is a possible annexation that we've been working on, talking on, that's been going on for two years.
Isn't that plenty of gas, I?
Correct.
Okay. But see it clearly from there.
Yeah, the property, the property owners are working with the county commissioner right now to move forward. They don't have, they're not on the agenda of the county commissioners yet. They've also been in communication, their attorney's been in communication with Christine Fall, Councilwoman Christine Fall, from Planning and Development Committee on City Council. She requested that I forward you the information on that piece of land. The planning commission would, of course, be responsible for making a recommendation to city council for zoning on it. And so I just wanted to show you that piece of land, approximately 15 acres, fronted, with frontage on East State Street. You can see, there is a portion of that that's in the floodplain. Either side of the property is within the city of Athens, and is zoned as manufacturing, so. Normally, when a piece of land is being annexed in, the property owner also will make a request for the zoning that they would like to see on it, and I don't believe the planning commissioner or council has to take that into consideration. I believe they may have made presentations to this planning commission, or planning commissions in the past, with other members present, and the discussion focused on the zoning as being M for manufacturing, or B3 for high-risk business, so.
Should we be concerned about, I assume the floodway is not on their way?
The floodway is entirely. The floodway is entirely to the south of the highway.
Okay.
In that situation.
Okay.
And the floodplain did not come through very well, but it's not...
It's not there.
Yeah, there's a thin line just above the, the blue contour line right there.
Okay.
And that is the, the extent of the 100-year floodplain. So much of the land...
Was it?
The floodplain?
No.
Is good on it.
That's a gray line. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and I know the dialogue has to do with town, Canaan Township trustees, there's some...
Yeah, they, they made a proposal to the trustees, I'm not, I'm not sure where that went, it seemed as if they were moving forward with getting it approved, so...
Okay. Is it, so East State Street is...
Oh, the 460 is right there, it says East State, right?
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then where, does the property go all the way to East State, or is there a city right-of-way?
There's one entranceway on the far east.
Okay, that's what says this black line, that is the property. Okay.
Correct.
It's our little white gap on our big zoning map.
You want, yeah, neither location, I just don't know the extent of, of the property work there.
There is a right-of-way, I believe, with let over CXS, utilities, and bike path, I think it cuts through there.
Okay.
I don't recall.
That was diminished when we put the extended bike path around that direction.
Okay.
So there are easements and right-of-ways, but it goes out to East State Street.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, yeah, I assume the commission would probably go towards manufacturing unless the owner of the property would make a convincing case to go with B3, but I can't see another use besides those two.
Well, you know, manufacturing, everything on the south side of East State...
Right.
Is manuf, is zone is manufacturing, and I would assume they'll request similar...
Yeah, it seems like most businesses have been able to make that work.
Where is this in the petitioning for annexation? Is this at the county level, or just still in...
The petition, as far as I know, has not actually been, been made yet, the formal petition to, it's just a request, or it's a, it's a one-body petition because it's one property owner, so, but I don't believe they are on the agenda with the county commissioners at this point.
Okay.
On those lines, though, I would say that the other potential annexation we've talked about in the East State Street area...
Across the street.
Is a land, yeah, pretty much across the street, that's owned by Mark Spezza. He will be appearing before the county commissioners on Tuesday, May 10th, so that's next week, in relation to his request to have that piece of land annexed in.
And he got council committed to services?
Yes, that is correct.
For lighting services for water, sewer, police, fire.
All right, thank you, Paul, take a question.
Did they, did council ask, or, you had a concern about the road leading into that, is that something also that the city would be responsible for?
You're talking about into the...
Mark Spezza.
As far as that, that would not be, that would be a private road.
Okay.
The condition right now is that he has to annex both portions of it. Originally, he was just talking about the 40 acres, but he has to put the other 30 in as well, and that's really following behind, and I think that was a dialogue with council at the time. And again, he still has to get an agreement with, for frontage, the development is gonna have to get frontage, either purchase it, or grant it even from the adjacent property owner for the Hope Drive access, but not through the city.
Would that be the, the R2 there, or the R1?
Um...
That access?
The access would be in R, I think it's an R3, isn't it?
No, it's on an R2.
On an R2?
The pri, the, the access drives...
Okay, the access drives R2?
Yeah, it's on that, the yellow portion of land there.
Yeah.
To the south, southwest of Hope Drive, you mean, Mary?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it's R2.
And I think when he was discussing an R3, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Actually, it's on this map here, at the red part.
Oh, still?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you must be, yeah, taking it right through to...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. John, you don't?
I have copies of the Ohio Planners' bimonthly newsletter for everybody before they leave.
That's it.
The only issue I had, or item I had, was for zoning appeals, Tuesday evening next week. We do have four cases on the agenda this time. 13 North May Avenue for a carport that will go over the side yard setback. 15 Larson's Way, this is a unique one, I suppose, they're requesting to not put a fence around a swimming pool, because they have a top designed that will hold weight of people, so I don't know how that one will go.
They have the top designed?
There is a, they have a top that can be pulled over the pool that is, with safety requirements, that you can walk on and not fall through, so therefore, they're saying you don't have to fence.
They're just gonna close it.
Right, doesn't want to close it. But our code does require that a pool, a fence is required around a swimming pool, so... East State Street, 2131 East State Street, Holzer Clinic, requesting for a directional sign for the, make sure I get it right, Super 8, I want to make it the proper name, but Super 8 Hotel, directional sign for them going to the hotel, located where their sign is at, going in the Holzer, and then the 10, Graham Drive, Integrated Services. So I guess you call that a substitution. So those are the four cases, so, might be a long...
The roundabout.
Roundabout.
Does, where does the, the BZA meet? You meet here?
Right here.
Okay, at 7:00 on the 10th?
Correct.
Anything else, John?
That is it.
All right, questions for John or Paul? All right, thank you both. We've, we've lost most of our citizens.
Sorry, you have any...
Any other item that we have not covered today that... Okay. Announcements, another business, our next meeting is scheduled for May 18th at 7:00 PM, here in this same room, on a special planning commission, to discuss the signed ordinance recommendations that will be cleverly crafted into our Title 23 by John and Paul. Any other announcements, or other business? Okay. Last meeting's minutes, everyone had a moment on last review.